I guess six thirty, following meeting in order. Dad and Lex, Michigan, or as well, the team will return our invitation.
Father God, for me once again, the fact that this taking over. They was like they don't see their kids, we mostly again, lots of you. Lots of you, best just be the love, you know, somebody say something, lots of you. To have to handle, lots of you. Let's hear the mission here, lots of you, you're a person.
And good, your name and place for meeting. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, he is a difficult with liberty and justice for all. For the society, the solidity mission statement. To advance a framework for our success, to balance the dynamic partnership and engage being. And Mr. Senator, if you would, you ready to do this, please?
Southern City of the Saints, Conference, and Bible Community where diversity, innovation, and education. Drive success in globally competitive society.
Thank you very much. Right, yes, what's to the agenda?
Mayor minutes from three point one hundred and seven has been slightly amended. As well as the meaning on three point three, came to the. Uh, really, the land account is officers for uh, things around there. Um, I would not know where the amendments to the.
Okay, now it's on, it's on the day. Make a motion that we approve the adjustments to the agenda. As presented, but. We're gonna load it in a second, and you stay. All of the players say aye, all of the pros like sign. The agenda is good. I'll probably make a motion to approve the center general. So I can. Have a motion, say, and question, comment. All of the players say aye, uh. All of the pros like sign. Motion here. Before we go any further, if you have some mic mic advice, and if you would please sound so please, you would. Alright, thank you. Alright, and send it in, no problem. Alright, let's go to the comments.
You have one, Cindy Dameron.
Alright, Dameron, you come up and state your name and address, please.
Cindy Dameron, one one oh eight R two S Highway sixty four west to South City, North Carolina, maybe seven three four. Um, my concern tonight is, um. I'm getting really frustrated as a realtor and. Working to bring in business just as hard as you guys are. And I am getting confused, I need to know. And so does every other agent and anybody coming to Siders. Uh, what the process is. Uh, a hardcore process, I'm getting. All sorts of. The counties over this state, the town is over that. Curbating, it's getting confusing, road closings are getting confusing, there are notifications on them. Um. And I just found out tonight that if your water wasn't. Uh, if you did not have an account. Uh, in twenty two. That your water cannot be reestablished, and you were not given, you couldn't reopen your business. Or that building is of no use anymore because they're. They had lost their allotment. And as far as I know, businesses and homes are not getting notified. Uh, so we're gonna have even more buildings that have. And I don't know now if you have had a business. And you haven't. And you haven't been using it, it's been a vacant building. How long you're allowed to be vacant? Before, um, you lose that right again. So, I've got several properties that are listed. And to find out tonight. That now I can't get my water and sewer reestablished in those businesses. And they're on the market, and what's that gonna do for? Our business and bringing up these people, both residential and. And then I need to know, or would like to know. If you do have a development, and it is approved. How are we gonna issue the need to determine? Is it first come, first served? How do we get on a docket, how do we get? We just need some guidance, some direction. And some organization to do development. It's very frustrating, it's hard to sell when the buyer and the agent. And the sellers can't get. A hardcore. Step by step process in getting these properties. You know, I mean, you guys can rezone all night long. But how do we know who should be the next one in line to get these losses? And when are they coming on? I was told today. June twenty twenty five, I applied for my, that that is where I'm starting to. First guy heard of. And that was given to me by the county. So I didn't even start to. Go ahead and leave them, go ahead and leave the town, I don't know. I just want some, I want some guidance, I want something that I can say. And tell the developer, tell the investor. And not sit having on my face. A couple weeks later. When they talk to you when it's up.
Yes. That's all, Tom, you know, um, um. Alright. Remember, radio, public hearing. R twenty three, that is O C O two, if you don't, really glad.
Good evening. Sitting in this is. Case, R twenty three, that is zero six zero two for Village Lake Drive. The applicant, the owner for the property is Rudar, Southern City LLC. Advocate and Courtney Queen of Quinton Engineering Incorporated. Their request is for a conditional rezoning of five blocks. From office institutional conditional to neighborhood business conditional. Um, the properties are located off of Village Lake Drive. Southern City Business Drive and one hundred Village Lake Drive. The total labor and cost parcels are ten point eight one. Lady Gore, they recommend approval of this reason. As you can see from the southern property map, the southern properties are located to the west of Stanton Avenue. South of Old US Court, two and one, and alongside the business on Village Lake Drive. The zoning map shows that the properties to the north and to the south are currently zoned. And the office institutional conditional. And to the west is Latin industrial, where the media towers, or the media power station is located. To the north is a nursing home, and to the south is a business park. The land use map plan recommends that this area be developed as mixed use. Mixed use is defined as areas often near major streets and highways. And best used for commercial uses, public facilities, and residential use. As you can see, the southern properties are undeveloped and cleared. They were initially rezoned, O and I conditional in association with business parks. And nursing homes, but have never been developed. Um, the. The business park area has trouble keeping residents, so they never did extend the business development to this area. Your option for tonight is to approve the rezoning to B one conditional. As the amendment, and find a rezoning as consistent with the surrounding area. And the Southern City Land Development Plan? Or deny the amendment that it finds a rezoning as inconsistent with the surrounding area and the Southern City Land Development. That says presentation, I believe you have a couple people kind of to speak on this side. Are there any questions to that?
Um, in, in your planning, uh, in the planning board meeting. When you're meeting with the applicants for the. Were they made aware that it could be a very good little while before they could ever start construction?
Yes.
Due to, uh, way forward.
Yes, that was explained or discussed, um, prior to Debbie's.
Yeah, cause he could be a. Considerably better. Any other questions? Alright. Uh, we have one person signed, that's the Jennifer. You give your name and address, please.
Jennifer Scott, I am at two forty four Irish Lane, Pittsburgh. I'm a private school here for a long time, and I represent the applicant. I think this is pretty straightforward, I've got our engineering folks here, open please, but we can see that answer questions can happen. Um, but in our view, this project sort of meets with your future land use plan, your projections for growth here. We do understand the ability concerns, this property is, does have sewer and water available to it, and that could have been available. And my client is fully appraised on that, but for now, I think this whole apartment project gives you. Um, some diversity and helping, sort of, right about we expect here behind. It's pretty straightforward project, so. You can't be married enough to get there, but we're happy to ask.
I'll look at your, uh, and maybe it's too soon in front of it. These units are pretty much out there on the highway, you can see them coming down. I, I just think we need that out of the.
Um, so I don't think the, the design, um, is fully been flushed out at this point, there will be, uh, uh. Difference of offering one human free bad movement, so I might have made a go of that, but it's not. I only just pick me back asking for any sort of variance or other conditional use per the ordinance, for the apartments themselves, I was.
Any questions? Any kind of questions from the planning board? Look, you know, very, very loads of those against. Right? That the game is down close. Uh, once we've involved with.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment from O I C to B one C. I find the amendment to be consistent with the town, so it's our city's future land use plan. Based on the staff reports supporting exhibits, consistency statement, and testimony provided. I also find the amendment is reasonable in harmony with surrounding area.
Sure. Alright, have a motion, and we have that, and we, once the board, any questions? Moving on to the vote, all of the favorites say aye, or all of the pros like sign. That motion period. Alright. With this one, we go on to the next vote again. Loads of people getting R twenty three, that O seven, O one, give it under its own, the most free church road.
Yes, this is a rezoning for R twenty three, that zero seven, that, I'm sorry, zero seven, zero one, Love Street Church Development. The owners of the property are G D Pomble, Brady Ray, and. G D Pomble, um, Harold Reed, and Deborah Tilson, and Boyd D. Rambler. That looking is Windsor Development Group Four LLC. The rezoning is a request to rezone eight parcels from Agapulco Residential, residential six. To residential preconditional. The two, uh, two are located as two unaddressed parcels on Love Street Church Road. For eleven Love Street Church Road, and five unaddressed parcels on Woody Lane. The acreage is totally eighty nine point six seven. The southern properties are located west of Love Street Church Road, and US four twenty one. East of Richardson Street, and Woody Lane, and north of Highway US sixty four. The zoning map shows that this area is currently zoned as agricultural residential. With a small portion of residential city building district located along, um, Love Street Church Road. To the south along Highway sixty four is mainly, um. AR and some, um, highway commercial zoning. The land use mesh suggests that this area will be rezoned, be developed as mixed use. Uh, medium density and medium density residential, as well as conservation, resident, conservation and recreation. The conservation and recreation area is located along Love Street Church Road, um, Love Street. As you can see from the provided site plan map. Um, the development will be done in four phases with a total of five hundred and sixty two units. A hundred and sixty nine will be single family residential, eighty one will be townhomes. And with three hundred and twelve apartments. There will also be open area and trails, as well as storm, um, storm. Stormwater measurements installed on the development. The properties are currently undeveloped. On road, the roadways will need to be improved, so Love Street Church Road will have to be improved. As well as Woody Lane, Woody Lane is an unimproved, um, private drive, so that would have to be improved. A floodplain development permit would also be required for this development. To the south are mobile homes, and a heavily wooded area is located to the west of site. Your options tonight are to approve the map amendment to R three conditional as presented. And find a rezoning as consistent with the surrounding area in the Southern City Land Development Plan? Or deny the map amendment as presented, and find a rezoning as not consistent with the surrounding area and the land development plan? That says presentation, I believe you have some people signed up to speak, but are there any questions of staff?
This one, what's your, I got you, Rod. You did say the stormwater control program, perfect, you do everything, that's all I'm mind.
That would have, um, that would have to be worked out during the design, um, the site development phase. But we did do, um, preliminary submit to the, um, engineer for the adverse visitor city. And he stated that he would need more detail in terms of figuring out what their stormwater need. Needs would be, and, um, if they're in compliance.
Would have, would have.
Yes. Yes, it would have.
The mobile home park there, is that going to stay, or was there got plans to mandate that?
That would have to be a question to ask the applicants. Um, they did include that area in their development plan, so there would have to be something that they would have to confirm that they're gonna. You know, remove or relocate, um, sometime.
Ask the same question as did the other. They were made aware, it'd be a long time before they could ever shovel any dirt without that.
Yes, that was the thing, several predevelopments.
Oh, the second thing too, and I, I, I noticed this in the agreement that, uh. Road comes out in the second quarter, I saw that there are plans to make that road on the right turn. That's correct. Good, the, the road is cut out by sewer, we're gonna be sewer, because you got a sewer, you're only gonna be able to go out. That's correct, and the part we're going with that, they allow them to get this before we get sewer through. So, hey, you had a point. Also happens, I traveled through there a lot. And you can make a right turn pretty easy. But if you try to go left, it's like running a dollar up through there. So I reckon my question is, if this, if this project gets off the ground before we get to sewer through. Will there still be the no right turn, that had to be a meeting? Or something built that the, can't do with that still? Is that still available before that equation for that?
That would be a question for the applicant as well, um. I know they have, they're in the process of working with DOT on their traffic impact now. So, there's still conversation going on with DOT, and I'm not sure how far they have progressed to that.
Any other questions?
Well, well, I do this in the same vein you have, but I guess we'll ask, or even. I guess we'll ask a version.
On that race, but it's the same vein, well, but, but. Alright, we'll move on. Our first figure in the fourth, if I can pour, someone else can give us your name and address, so we can report the first. Will that line ways? What I think for ramp is to go over. Alright, that'll be fine. Mr. Lee Land.
That's me.
Great.
Good evening, my name is Lee Land, I live in Hollywood, Chatham County, Chapel Hill, Carolina. Um, I have a good connection to Southern City, my stepdaughter graduated from the school of science and math. The school of science and engineering that they've changed the name. Um, that was the new, yeah, she'll get the old name, because she is entering into her senior year at the school on her two year degree at Chatham County. This morning, I looked at a number of homes that are already selling in Southern City, there are a lot of. That is a twenty percent up in increase from last week, there were nine. You have done an extremely good job of bringing in, uh, full speed alone. Need flat pounds. What we are trying to do on Love Creek Church, it's still a work force. So for everybody that works at full speed, and gets paid by full speed. And everybody that worked in Toyota, and gets paid by Toyota, will be able to come there and find a place to live. We have done a wetland study, we have done archaeological study, we have done a historical preservation study. We have found an endangered species in this stuff. We have found nothing that indicated that we should be eating another thing. Code for, we have done a traffic study, not only with, um, working with the planning department. We have, our engineers that have the traffic study, the town engineers looking at the traffic study. And DOT is like that, so if you can be blind with anything and everything is. There is a decision right away in Love Creek Church Road, and we will be having to ban Love Creek Church Road and wider road. But it will fit within the, within the right of way that is already there, and we will not be taking anything of to buy. As far as the right turn in and right turn out, we'll be glad to work, we have our engineer here, our traffic engineer, and, uh. And Craig, there are another engineer, all of whom can speak more than I can about traffic. Um, we had a neighborhood meeting. Uh, everything went very well at the neighborhood meeting. I have promised to name either two roads, two paths, two something, after two grandfathers that were connected to the lane. One of them is Mr. Clapp. And his dog granddaughter is right here. And the other is Mr. Jackson, and you will be turning to those names and honoring the people that had it landed in the farm in many years. One of the questions was about the mobile home park. Uh, Stephen Koppel and his father and sister home that man. And had mobile home park there a long time. He is very interested and very concerned about his people that live there. And it's not just a business to him, he knows those folks, most of them have lived there a long time. He requested six months, uh, notice, so that he could give them plenty of time for him to pick up the traders. And relocate them to another place, and charge them the same rent that they are paying now, and that. Cannot guarantee that will happen, but that is what Stephen has told me the entire time. And that's what I know he intends to do. When I made your comments, I know I can keep the comments, the only thing I can tell you is that that is meant to be the gentleman that wants the land today. And we did include into our contract that we would do six months of notice, so that there would be plenty of time. To make sure that people have a good place to go. What questions do we have?
Well, I have a road question, but I don't think there's one.
I'm not the smart one, yes, or roadie here, road engineers up here. They're coming, they're, they're on here. Okay, alright. Any other questions? And, uh, I think, but I thought one way, by the way.
Can, can you tell me what you define as work?
Right now, we know what the given salaries are supposed to be at full speed and what they are at, uh, Toyota. Based on those salaries today, we would be able to build homes that those people could afford. Some on rent, because we're trying to build apartments, and some for sale. But we would have something that would, that whole range, these are not. Inexpensive houses or affordable homes, and they are certainly not going to be expensive ones. This is not a, this is not gonna be a country club neighborhood, this is workforce. And our goal completely is to be, and it makes sense, you look about, there's eighteen hundred jobs this way, and there's twenty two hundred jobs this way. Those, those are, that's, that's our market, and so what we are aiming for is homes that comes for them. What will happen in the next two years while we wait for sewer, I don't know. But that is our goal, if we can start today, we can do that today, and that is our goal.
What is the, oh, people. What about the other people there, they're going fun when they, when they are.
You're talking about in the trailer? Yeah. Um, what they want, what Stephen wants to do is, is for each trailer that is there is to move it. Which is why I put six, we put together, me and Stephen, we sat down and talked about, how can we take care of his people? What can I do to help him take care of his people? And he called them his people, he didn't say my traders. He called them his people, because he said he'd known them for so long, and they've been such good folks. He wants to move the traders to a location that will allow them to continue to rent. You know, beyond that, I, I don't know if I can answer. But I've done everything I can to try to assist what he wants to do. And to do the right thing with everything.
You have a question, I did.
Um. I know you were saying your, your, your goal is. Um, I know you were saying your, your, your goal is to meet the needs of, of the people who work in either risk speed or, uh, with the Toyota plan. Um, when you think about teacher salaries and, and things like, you know, like that, where would that fit into all of that, because, you know, you have new teachers starting out and they don't.
They don't, they should.
Should, but they don't. Yeah, but they don't.
One of the things I've learned, uh, that I've taught people, um, over the years, I've done a lot of volunteering to things. I, um, I started volunteering how to take food to people. And started with the volunteer, I take food. Then I started this single project by thousand and ended up doing over ten thousand meals for people that need. Right now, I don't do a lot of volunteering, so, so two weeks ago, I was taking care of my cousin who has special needs in the hospital. And my mother, I see her four days a week, who's in a nursing home with Alzheimer's, very advanced. But can't be everything to everybody. I love those turtles that have it out at the beach, but I can't volunteer to save them. I don't know that I can do everything for everyone, but here's what I can do. It is important to us that we not just come here and build here, but that we are. We will become citizens here and building citizens of Fowler City. And so one of the things that I included into Mark Cream's here, he's the president of Wendy's. When we started talking way back, and I've been working on this project for here, way back. I told him, one of my concerns is affordable. Nothing that's important, and I can't be everything to everybody. But negotiated in my contract with Mark Cream is, and Anna is here from Habitat, we met, she likes people mean that time. We're going to donate a hundred thousand dollars to that. As soon as the first house gets the ceiling. And that's one of the ways we think we can be a good citizen of Fowler City, as well as building.
If, why is the, are you the idol?
I don't have that today. We just know what the salaries are, and what we're trying to do is working, it's going to depend on, I mean, so right now, we know in the interest rates and what we want to build, we know what can buy here. I don't know, I don't know that I've done the math in my head exactly what that would be. But we do know what we're aiming for is to meet those two markets. No matter what number I do, that number is going to be up or down in two years based on interest rates, based on the number, based on things that I can't control. So right now, we know we can meet those needs, and that's what we hope to do, but that's where our marketing is, that I don't really have a place.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Lonnie will be next. Name and address.
My name is Lonnie West, and, uh, my current address is one street, reach out of Mill Road in Pittsburgh. But for the first ten years that I lived through it with the Fowler City address, uh, fourteen forty-eight dollars for a road. And, uh, I still feel like I'm a citizen of Fowler City. Because I still bank here, I still shop here, and, uh, I feel at home here. When I moved in, uh, Fowler for Road, my neighbors all came by to welcome me, I built a house there. And, uh, they would stop by saying, I'm going to town, get anything I can bring back for you. So that impressed me that they call Fowler City Town. But if they needed to go the other way, they didn't say if going to Pittsburgh, they said, gotta go to the sheriff's office. I've got to go to the tax office, and that's where they, they never mentioned the town. And so to me, growing up in the country, that country town, my Fowler City, I still feel at home here. I worked for Chad County for, uh, a few years, and I was the executive director of the council in Asia. And during my tenure there, I built the senior center, Jerkin, the business department of Fowler City. Then I retired from there and, uh, activated my real estate license, I'm now a real estate broker and, uh, top producer at Chad Homes Realty. I started a real estate career here in Fowler City, and I sold a lot of homes in, uh, Audubon Estates, in, uh, in Morgan Hill, and, uh, over in Harmony Hills, I was the only type, uh, uh, representative there selling the new homes in front of the building. So I served for, what, four terms with Michael Price on the affordable housing board. Uh, and always I was looking for a way to build and find someone to build affordable housing, workforce housing. And, uh, I was one who put together, uh, what, six of the articles that we're talking about tonight. And all the people that I contacted, uh, owned the land, they inherited the land, but they no longer live in Fowler City. Either in Greensboro or Julian or Liberty. And, uh, they, we put them together with some others, people, and, uh, that's the project we're talking about now. With the understanding, and we have been great, and just folks, that's what they want to do, build affordable workforce housing. And not just for, uh, the people who might come to work here, but what about people that already live in Fowler City? Some of the homes that people that I told, people that are in Audubon Estates, what if they want to move up? And get a more modern home or a larger home than whatever, and you know, mostly the homes in Audubon Estates are, uh, double wax. And if somebody wants to move up, and they will be available for them as well. And, uh, for teachers and policemen and other people who work in this, in Fowler City as well, we're not going to block anyone out. It's, uh, going to be available for, for Fowler City, that's what I want to see about my new hometown. I've lived in Chad County now for twenty years, that's the longest I ever lived anywhere. I've, uh, lived all over the world and all over the United States, serving in upholstery and working for the state of Nevada. Uh, and I own homes in seven different states. But this is home to me, and, uh, I am just happy to see something happening in my hometown. The people that own this property, that, uh, were looking to develop now, all of them are ecstatic, happy to see that their property, that they inherited parts of the old family farm is what it would become, uh, residences for Fowler City. And, uh, that's, uh, what we're looking to do. Any questions with Larry?
No.
Thank you. I'm there, right, fellow veteran, thank you for your service, yeah. All right. Great, you, you, that's good. I'm terrible, man, I'm glad to gather all of yours. If you name an address, please.
Uh, four oh three, little name, I'm, I'm consultant that's working with, with Lee and Windsor to help shepherd this project in the process. Um, with me tonight is Baham, along with, uh, BHB, he's our traffic study, so. I'll address kind of the, the slow traffic, but if you got one to dig into the weeds, he can be very specific. Um, first of all, just the one question about the swollen water environmental. Um, we are going to preserve pretty much most of the environmental features on the site, the floodwaters, the streams, the weapons. Any impacts that are generally limited to a, a crossing, required by connectivity, will be done in accordance with, um, local state federal statutes. Um, stormwater management, we'll pay compliance, we show representatives of our stormwater features are. Um, we think that they're large enough to serve what we need to meet, um, both due to create and, and, uh, potential requirements. Traffic study, we've submitted traffic study, it's been reviewed by town consultant, been reviewed by DOT. Uh, we've addressed the comments of both the consultant and town, well, DOT congestion made, and we submitted back then for, for final sign off. Uh, none of our recommendations, recommendations change with time we prepare it. Now, uh, we will be, uh, day one, um, building the intersection of Love Creek Church Road and US sixty-four as a right in, right out driveway. Basically, we're putting in a restricted workshop type movement. So day one, um, you'll be able to turn left into the site, but you won't be able to make a left out of the site. Again, today for that reason, which I've talked about. Uh, so that in, in Baham, it models what that movement looks like when you go to lane and have to connect the interstate and turn around. Uh, and then, you know, a hundred years from now, when DOT decides to make it a super street, that was taken more restrictive in terms of what going, but he's also analyzed that. Uh, so, uh, there's a lot more I could answer on the technical side of it, but I'll stop there and see if there's any specific question I can help answer. And then if you want more details on the traffic today, more than all the, it's the we've done.
I feel like. Oh, we should, whatever, very good. Yeah, I'm going to wait for the fact.
You're all right. I'll bring up, I'll, I'll sit down, but, but, uh, my good friend Baham will.
Anybody, anybody got it, great, you know, we never got.
Okay, yeah, all right, get ready for the real show. I'll make me nervous.
If you can, state your name and address, please, sir.
Uh, could you, my name is Bob Ungwan. I'm a traffic engineer with, uh, BHB, my business address in that forty, and I actually live with, uh, your right. So I graduated from N C State in two thousand and five, and two thousand and three, they passed the degree two thousand and five with GT. And being practically a traffic engineer since then, and doing a lot of traffic studies in China area in China, I'm glad to be here. So we have been working with, uh, Winter and Greg and the lead colors, my first involvement at the local law firm. And I was at any conference, started that calling game, uh, helping to make the project, okay, what's going on over here, and we have a plan to bring all the people here. But if people do have a concern regarding that day, that want to, want us to get involved. And then start this year, and Winter again involved in, and we are on the contract. And we work with Tom and, uh, Andrew Jennifer and the project, and all the inputs, and, uh, we work with N T V, we keep going through a spoken process, we tend to be in care of the stuff. Really, a fresh opinion, you know, regarding what kind of impact, you know, going to be, and where we should study. So we collect traffic data in May of this year, and then we did track study in June, we completed track study. You June, and then the town, uh, with, uh, their consultant review, check study for the comments. DOT for the comments, and the DOT comment basically come through with the, the PR recommendation. And the top comments, boy, I'm comments and great comments, we try to refine the model, so we provide, I'll do the traffic analysis. Basically, from, you know, what we recommended. So the fifth is the back to the attention that's in the mirror, right, uh, you know, the. The left out from Love Creek Church on to US sixty-four, it is a, uh, traffic issue, and it's not only, you know, people are waiting over there. You know, the people with, with lung, and what they do, they are risking, so that's a big concern. So N C DOT, every kind of problem, they have a long term, long term solution for US sixty-four, you know, with why you also make your management. Risk picking from left turn out from inside value and providing the interim solution, a lot of, or hoping there's some in the bigger road, you want a new requirement, and then you, you have a solution that's long term. Under interim conditions, and we are ready to provide, you know, this one, we propose to cover a lot of your church, you know, to go right out. Basically, you still keep your right in, and people still, you know, go to the right front and left end, but, uh, for the right out, you can, for for the culture. Uh, basically, we're speaking for the interim condition, that's, uh, when traffic is still red light. When traffic, you know, become heavier, and but for all the key project, for DOT project completed, we, we will propose adding a right turn, also, we are exploring options, telling media treatment. Basically, you have the media invite, he is of a last grade on sixty-four. And we are thinking about, you know, do we have enough to attend maybe and further, and one that can improve traffic, uh, compliance, and really, you keep receiving. So all this with, uh, with, uh, recommendation, you know, a lot of great, um, work, and, uh, also with, uh, thank you, Max, uh, you know, we are glad, you know, and, uh, there are all these sections, we're doing track setting, meet the DOT standard, meet our standard.
One question, I, I'm letting you do a question, I, I'm not sure if you know. If you, if this project is getting ready for the super street, which is probably good.
Yes.
Uh, and you, you got plans to put a normal right turn in there no matter what situation, right, by our day.
That's exactly right, so we said three scenarios. Basically, build out in Europe, one in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
That's near term, that probably, you know, can handle ninety, some demand unit. And then also the full bid on twenty twenty-seven. And for DOT keep project timeline, it started contracting in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. And it's going to take at least three, four years for them to complete. So we did additional scenario called, uh, keep your analysis, that put us on the twenty thirty-two. We can, like, you know, all, you know, under twenty twenty-five condition. With this project, without tip, tip project, and twenty twenty-seven condition, twenty twenty-seven condition, with the target for this project and without it, and twenty thirty-two, and we are, that's why we developed solutions to meet the standard media and on all occasions.
You get your project down before they do.
Yes.
Now that's right, you said you gotta go down, you're gonna have to go west on sixty-four, and you're gonna have to turn somewhere. Like, you wanna go eat?
Yeah.
If you get done before the DOT gets done.
Yeah.
Where is that turn, and how is it going to do?
Yeah, that, that's what the model is.
Yeah.
That, that's exactly, you know, I was doing that, I looked at, you know, the error map, and it's, okay, that is many, obviously, probably that's all too much there. And but then I made a sign, I drove through, I made right turn, I think my immediate response is there are multiple choices. But the closest one might be pass the church and make the turn on to the last option, and it's a comeback out of the cemetery. And make, uh, make a left turn on a single line conditions. So to me, as that's the most convenient, the safety you can have prospect, your business, so you can ride out, ride in, come back out on the traffic line. So that's the safest solution, and then that's when I assign the traffic, and then I try to make sure, you know, there's enough prepared. Add a traffic light, so we glad to find out, yes, there's enough to handle all this extra, you turn off.
So, yeah, so with the, along with that, because that, as, as I think anybody who goes to the shop, the blue line knows, you can get about four cars before the late turns. So, you know, what is, are you suggesting the, the, the light change cycle? Or what were, what were you suggesting, because if you've got a lot, you got, you said ninety, ninety trips coming out in a, in a, in the morning. Those ninety cars aren't all going to wolf speed, they, to your point, they may be going to, you know, work, work out for, um, Toyota. And they have to come back around, and then the lights there don't hold that long either.
There are secondary, you know, that, that's a great pattern, that's why, you know, we have like a preferred option, we want to ally on the most, so it makes sure that there's enough capacity, there's a queue. You mentioned about, you know, whether the people can navigate, or whether you put that route, it's, I think, there was, everybody can take that route, and that, you know, good route, it can be better. What is that gonna happen, that will bring up, you know. Until you turn out from sixty-four, you can easily turn your left on a single line condition, or you can without, you know, you can turn out onto either bajangos, or some other, you know, businesses, you can turn out. So that's built multiple, so multiple alternative for, for people to make that turn back. I don't know if that extends.
Yeah. My question is, uh, Richardson Road, that comes out on Slumtown Way.
Mm-hmm.
Was there any thought of making? Is there any thought of making a second entrance connection?
Yes.
Is that a private road or do you think?
Um, that's what actually we, we talked with the D O T, they have, they, they already, you know, trying to answer, you know. They're from, uh, registration, although we can view here off and with the fan. As a part of D O T, but then hey, Jeff, yeah, showing there's some kind of a private own, you have it still with duties then, but. They didn't provide that anger, but if you have that, uh, secondary connection, you know, that on their.
That would be a good option.
Just to clarify that, once we get above a hundred units.
Yeah.
We have to have the secondary access point for your ordinance and for the T I A, so. He, his, his model does explain that, we're working with the proper to get that right away clarified and dedicated and work with the. Absolutely, after hundred units, yeah.
Okay.
You need to have a secondary common access.
Yeah.
Other than just. I think that's, uh, yeah, that's all good, I'm, I have that all our safety.
Thank you.
And then the, the other thing, when, when, uh, you look at it and it comes out on Snow Camp Road. Snow Camp Road is not a wide road. And it is. Fully residential area. So what, what is you looking at with that end of? The, the secondary. Interest in it.
Their primary access along last great church road and want to connect that, that take a big majority traffic. And then you do need to act, put in acter element, probably, you know, acter him that, how to develop to handle, you know, but. Check while you, well, Snow Camp is secondary. So basically, I, we didn't, you know. Uh, at that level, yeah, but N C D O T does have a table in show how many traffic, you're a twenty four hour day. This road is only carrying and how wide it need to be. And how much even that it need to be, I think the minimum, the very, very minimum, they ate, 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 ate with a lot of.
That is a lot of, a lot of.
Is that, is that, that is some, some right? It, but once you are over thirty A D T threshold, and every daily traffic threshold, then I agree then. I agree that you know, okay, all, you know, provide completion, you know, pay your shoulder, something like that. Yeah, we're working on, still a project, oh, yes, that's, that's very good.
Any questions?
Okay, all right. Uh, Mr. Mark Kirby. Mark Crane.
Ah, yeah, I'm sure, yeah, okay. You're Mark, right?
I'm Mark, yeah.
I'm Thorin, you, we can say your name and address.
Mark Crane, uh, two four connection place in Raleigh, Carolina. Uh, I'm here representing Windsor, um, Windsor, hopefully you have, it's dry based company, so. We're your neighbors, we're your local, we're not human, I'm out of state. Um, so in regards to workforce housing and your questions on, um, pricing, certainly two years out, it is starting to nail what. But I can tell you this, we've got a wide range of products, a wide range of square footage. So that, that tells you where we cut off basis, so to speak, as our plan. Um, I don't know if Craig mentioned Stimmel is the engineering group we're working with, and I think they're well respected in this area. So we got them as a strong partner to carry through the scenes. We, we would acknowledge the concern with utilities. Certainly timeline is a little bit unknown, and I would echo public comment that kicked off. It would be helpful for us to know timelines associated with that and processes associated with that. Because we do have investors and, and, you know, principals who need certain kind of project, so. Side issue, I know, but, you know, definitely a concern, but acknowledge at the same time, we know it's a long timeframe, work with that. But we need to know in that time thing, hits, critical dates, release surgery. That's all I got, um, hope you guys, speaking, doing our best to provide your product.
Thank you very much. Ryan.
I, I'm gonna get far on part of those.
Okay. Anna, two. You say your name and address, please.
I'm Anna, two of my address, two hundred and fifty minute street in Park. Hey, um, I am the development finance director for ten thousand, so I think. Um, and we said, and I'll keep it brief, you already shared that, but we were very finally in the hopes of the clear. Uh, there was a conversation about workforce selling that would serve the sort of lower half of the lower part of the spectrum compared to their workforce selling operates. Um, through those conversations, we have received a hundred thousand dollar pledge from Windsor, uh, which we're excited to accept. Uh, and that investment will be used for, um, for having that individual that will help in other cities. Um, I wanted to be here on behalf of Habitat tonight, just to make sure that y'all are aware of that investment. Um, and throw our support behind, uh, development that is, um, addressing. Housing which is needed in a major way in other city, workforce housing especially. Um, and work really to see their third investment, find a portable housing, help serve the teachers and. You know, people who are gonna clean all the buildings. So that's it, thank you, guys.
Any questions? Okay, you, and since you're the last speaker. Only I'd be me is, mine probably get on me, so I didn't say that, that, uh, there is a forty thousand program. In Chatham, I don't know if you're aware of it, so there is money out there, uh. We'll take all the money that you, yeah. We can give you, liar or not, we can give you names, so that kind of there. And I hate to y'all detail, but there's, if that's something you like, look at some very worthwhile, for our group, and, uh, we'll be glad to pass that information. All right, thanks, conclude that. And that's all figures, that, so, so again. Right, what's immediately with the board, so American.
Hang on a second, uh, before, I, I think the, the, no, the, the motion, I think, as that stated here, if you correct, because we're not moving from the L I C to B one C. We're actually moving from A R, uh, and R six to, um. Yeah, we're, we're, we're resounding A R and R six of our reconditioned, if we just need to put on the motion that got here.
Yes, before I say, okay, make a motion to the bridge, propose some amendment from A R and R six. Who are three C. On the amendment due to the system with the town of Solitude, keeps the land up on. Based on staff report, sporting the digits, the consistency statement, testimony provided. Also, found the amendment is reasonable and harmless to surrounding area.
Second. We have a motion, and now, sec, if any special questions at this point. You know, we're going to vote, all of the favorite seats, I was saying, aye, aye, all of the code lifetime, and a motion here. All be. Eddie. You be.
Yeah. I will have changed the, uh. The. Uh, we haven't gotten a chance to, uh, the, uh. Thing is, before, why, or need, or gay there, or probably a name.
Oh, in a minute.
In a minute.
Well, I listen to you all.
Yeah.
What page are you on in the packet, Commissioner Austin?
Oh, it's on page four and five, yeah, thank you.
And it was about.
Yeah, I'm, I saw our committee. They got me voting no, I'm just looking at. It's wrong.
Maggie Chang. You know, I think you've already approved, I'm very slow.
There was some, um, that we had the, you have to put your hand up, and you didn't vote at all, that counts as it yet. So. But. Can remember, Jennifer?
I don't, I'm sorry, I, I don't, I don't remember, I mean, I know that. That we, we talked about after that meeting, if you didn't put your hand up, and I think one of you guys asked during the meeting, if you, if you didn't. Um, you know, that that counts as a yes vote on whatever the motion is. Um, so, I mean, if, if you guys all want, um, you know, as a whole, we're want the, um. The minutes to change to reflect how, you know, Commissioner Austin felt like he voted, then we're happy to do that, but y'all would all have to agree to amend it.
If there's not a change now, I don't know, you have a small, but. And going forward, we have.
Yeah, going forward, yeah, we're gonna.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Well, that was, that was, that was, that was a relatively cool thing, that I've ever read before.
I made, I'll, I'll, I'll perform that again, I make a motion that we, the, uh, amend the July seventeenth, twenty twenty three minutes. To reflect a nay vote for Commissioner Austin on the, on the proposed restructuring finance budget department.
Yeah, most of the same, man, good question. And, uh, we move to vote, all of the parents say aye, all of the code lifetime, that would be a miss. All right.
Yeah, just a few things, I know everybody's probably, uh, because the information on that, uh, this, with the policy being here, this was the first month. That we had the increases reflected on utility bills. So you get calls from, from a certain question, the accuracy of their bill, we're happy to work with them. It may be attributable to the increase, it wasn't first increase in seven years. Uh, another note on that, the, the increase we budgeted at one point seven million. Uh, is what we generated additional revenue, and all that is an operation cost. Uh, none of this revenue is going towards the Wolf Speed project or any other project that is here all through the community. I know what that keeps being said, but we want to make sure the aggregate information is out there. Uh, with some of the changes in the, in the finance department, uh, we're completely stacked again in finance on the utility billing side as of today. Uh, we have employees on it, we also had Cassie voice from Robert Haffner start with us. Filling in as the general finance director for the government hire. So we're, we're moving along finance and management, there. Um, um, discussing the gas, uh, meeting about permitting, uh, nothing's changed in Solid City about permitting process in the last few years. Um, and filling inspection is mostly the canvas, the same process that is being. Uh, as far as not being able to reduce our old accounts, that is something not decided by Solid City, that's a condition that was more toward. That was opposed by us, that's not Solid City, that's not the state that expected of us. We also want to make sure that we're meeting the super obligation of the Wolf Speed. Uh, we committed in our agreement with general one point one seven billion gallons per day at their full build out. And we want to make sure that we have that obligation there, but while we're still working with them, what facilities are gonna be, that's what creates that fluidity. And what they expect next, if they're gonna be in terms of the housing and what we commit to, and so we have our numbers, we gotta make sure that we're meeting our obligations. Uh, and I also want to recognize some Wolf Speed people here tonight, uh, Chris McCann, Tyus Sears, uh, bottom Palmer. Uh, Robert House, and then they have hired a senior, uh, project manager, this Perry McDaniel here, who's taken the lead here in Solid City. Uh, great group of people to work with, and we're really excited to have him here, uh, working alongside us. And, well, one last thing, this is, I know it's, uh, information in the community. Uh, it's unfortunate that we were not able to meet the requirements for our offering football cheerleading this fall. Uh, but I did have some, uh, numbers for y'all, and show you what participation was like. Uh, playing football, we got seven out of twenty, eight new tackles, twelve out of twenty five, ten new tackles, six out of twenty five. Twelve new tackles, seven out of twenty five, cheerleading, six each year, six each year with seven out of twenty, eight each year. Six out of twenty, ten each year, three out of twenty, twelve each year, two out of twenty. So we have around six or seven average out of twenty to twenty five that we needed for those programs on. Uh, established the best we could to market advertising programs, but we just felt toward. We participate in league football without any next cameras, so we're not in a position to change the schedule. Or maybe change to extend it ourselves, and call for, I don't know, facilitate running a program. Uh, but in light of that, we want to make sure that we're working with the community as much as possible, because football is important for our youth. So we're gonna offer football camps, um, this fall, free starts, new participants. And we're working alongside Coach Ryan Johnson, who's the head coach of the football, uh, program at Jordan Math and Basketball. Uh, so we want to make sure we're doing the best we can for our youth this fall. And there's a couple of staff, we technically hired for the last two red, red, four day position. Uh, we have one individual starting third grade attempt, and the other individual starting on the fourteenth, so, and the fourteenth will be fully staffed and partly regulated.
Let's maybe miss, why, why do you think that they didn't sign up? I didn't know that then.
Well, it's, it's a downward trend that you're seeing, because I don't look for use of football in this whole area, by understanding rambling, did not get enough participants to offer football this year either. Uh, my parents concerned about injuries and concussions, which are a legitimate concern, uh, today, uh, I don't think there's any one reason. Uh, but what, what was intrudable to is the vacancies of the panel staff, we went for the same, our people, the group that we had in the past, just. Didn't work out this year, but by offering a free camp, uh, put on by the high school, it gives those that are interested in participating an opportunity to do so. And it'll also help us gauge what the interests of football on board, so if it's something the community wants, we want to make sure we provide it.
Any questions? That's all, thank you. And on the turn. I don't want to get out of that. Okay, you have anybody come in?
Um, lady called me today, and I haven't looked at this. Oakwood Cemetery, she said a globe was broke, a missing. I haven't looked at it, I don't know, some of them are in the post, or, I don't know.
Let's take a look at that.
And you're, you're working with John Day on this, one of the real ones.
Yes.
Yeah, so. I don't know, we need to have, have some kind of, I thought we were done.
I did too.
Well, you did too. So we, there, there have been several conversations. That have already taken place, and we're also sent another letter addressed the concern there.
Oh, and everything I said, so this, this came up tonight, and two different people. That said, this, this whole thing like Mitch Downon and the folks and other about. Whatever this, the, it sounds like we need to have some kind of get together group, real group, like that, whoever. In that group and explaining some of this to them as a group. In that group and explaining some of this to them as a group, for everybody to hear the same, but.
I, I agree with you, uh, and you're a part of the group of sewer allocation plan discussions that we've been having. On Mr. Hayes, Mr. Taylor, and other, other votes. Uh, I think we need to figure out and get on the same page with that group. So that we know what that message is, if the last thing we wanna do is put out changing information or incorrect information. But I think we need to improve in that group, so we can get the way of the base.
That's good, when are you gonna do that?
Well, we're meeting on the twenty first.
That's good. Yeah, but at the same time, I think we need to hear and incorporate some of the, the real. And if the people that are doing it, it sounds like it's just fusion somewhere there. There's some information that's not being disseminated, so put something together. How about that?
That works.
Yes, yeah, yeah, well, I think we do need to do some.
All right.
All right, anything else?
I enjoy the national right out. This is, this is a criticism, it's just, uh, your people talking when you're bargaining. They just wanna know why we didn't have food. I would let the chief.
So. The food was a point of origin for the previous national out, and national out, I believe, by the engagement in, in. Or it looks more on our town, as opposed to a food event. I realized that, uh, the time period of national out with families and attendance created a need for something. Uh, during that period, but this is the first time I've gone out with animals for years.
Yes.
So I could not anticipate participation or attendance, so I felt that best, that it should just take it off this year. And I think if the vendors there and get the, the new storyboard lined up for that. So next year, we'll solicit, uh, town vendors or food trucks to come.
Good.
But, um, I don't think the police department or park department is gonna be responsible for a food service.
No, I'm just, I was gonna let that.
Oh, no, but, uh, well, I know that Park and Rec does have some. Uh, food vendors that are frequent buyers that work in session thing and kind of other events. But I hope that, uh, we'll be able to solicit food vendors, food truck, uh, that will create an option for family.
Yeah, I think you're gonna get.
I was just gonna add, if everyone's all that needs to the communities itself. Or are, are we going to continue to do the, the one event? And also, I just had to turn about publicity. Because it seemed like it was late getting out, that it was happening.
About the questions, um, I feel like the static display, one simple location, best serves our community. The town of Solid City, uh, itself, uh, perhaps at, at another population point. Where neighborhood represents larger numbers, uh, with the rest of the community that I would support. Like I've been doing to, uh, previous year. Uh, prior to W nineteen, we had the majority of the block captains, including for, uh, Commissioner Tony Tyler. And seventy percent of the block captains, who would rather have a static display, because it's later, labor intensive. And those people that were responsible for being the block captains and providing food, they were tired. Uh, there were only a few opposing views to have that tech display. But I think that this year, uh, for the first time in several years. Whole idea is to bring the community together at one central location, and in the past, it seemed like. Uh, former mayors and town managers that we spent five minutes in one location, we never had enough time to integrate with our members and attendance. And I think that misses the bill.
My comment, just to be simply, I, I think, you know, we're just getting back into it and, you know, trying to gauge. We're trying to gauge the interest and trying to gauge that, I think this was a good year for us to, to have as a, as a benchmark, and you can, you know, go from there and beyond. Yeah, but I, I think having, you know, inviting food trucks and inviting, you know, things like that would be, would definitely be positive.
Well, and, and the police department is trying to support the strategic plan, the strategic plan. And the theme of Parks and Recs is that, that Bray Park has become a neutral site and, and a well attended site. We do Easter there, we do Halloween there, the department participates in both, uh, during the, uh, the moving, that, moving off the bike radios. So we want the, the massive park, or massive Bray Park, massive plan is for. Bray Park is gonna be a centerpiece of the town. And I feel like, uh, they supporting the other departments and other parks for us. We feel like currently that that's the best option for national out.
Mark, I heard, I was standing over, explaining that parking.
But I, I, I too fell into that same flume of.
I thought you might have water, no, you're. Okay, anybody, anything else? No close second, well, here's something, get out of here. So, so, yeah. All of the favor of the Germans, they are, uh, we're done. Thank y'all for this day.